Hello, everyone. I'll call the regular general meeting to order. Can you read us out a closed session, please, sir?
Yes. I move that this council certified by a recorded vote that to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor. Are we voting?
We should be able to.
There we go.
Did everyone cast your vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I can't.
Oh, it's hit save.
Okay.
Did we do it?
It's not showing. So, everyone is a yes.
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 Okay. We'll get this figured out.
Yes, yes.
There we go.
All right. So, can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Thank you. Are there any announcements?
One announcement we've got is that tomorrow night is the National Night Out, which Charlottesville Police are sponsoring. It will be at the Lower Field in Washington Park from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. They tell us there will be free food. I think they suggested Mission Barbecue and Kona Ice would be providing free food. And there's also, in addition to DJ and games and all this other stuff, a donut eating competition. So, I'm not quite sure what that means. Certainly, this diabetic will not be participating, but I'm sure that other people will have a good time. So, if you want to come and find out what a donut eating competition is all about, 5:30 to 8 o'clock, Washington Park.
Thank you. Hope people can make it out. I think they've got some great activities and things planned, so.
All right, I've got a couple. The first is that this Sunday, August 10th, is the next in our series of monthly neighborhood walks put on by the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and now co-sponsored by Ragged Mountain Running Shop, which is lovely. The walk is going to explore the Greenbrier Neighborhood Meeting at CHS at 9:00 AM on Sunday, so that if there's any heat, we can beat the heat.
Good.
Yeah. It's about three miles. It's mellow and friendly and easy and just to kind of walk around the neighborhood. My second announcement is the Charlottesville Commissioner of Revenue, Todd Divers, would like to announce that his office will be once again participating in the annual Commissioners and Cans Food and Fund Drive during the month of August. It's an annual partnership between the Commissioners of Revenue Association of Virginia and the Federation of Food Banks. It's a statewide event to take on the fight against food insecurity. So, it's a month long, so please feel free to bring in food, canned food, to the Treasurer's Lobby on the first floor of City Hall, the hallway outside Council Chambers up here at Carver Rec and at Key Rec. And then you can also go to charlottesville.gov/cor for a link to donate. Every dollar helps provide enough food for four meals. So, hope you participate in that. Thank you.
Yeah, more and more people are going to need those food assistance with, you know, different programs being cut back. Are there other announcements? I can't remember if you had one, Michael. So, we are now, we'll move on to proclamations. Let me make sure I have the right page here. To proclamations, and it is my honor to recognize someone in the community that really is making a tremendous impact in the community, and it is Mr. Nicholas Fagan. So, I think that this is a complete surprise to him, but he's the type of individuals that we have in our community that are making an impact, doing the things without this type of recognition. And we want to make sure that, you know, that with the help of his lovely wife, that we let people know that we appreciate the work that they do. So, I'm just going to read some of the things that he has done in the community. Whereas the City of Charlottesville takes great pride in recognizing individuals whose dedication and service specifically uplift and empower our community, especially our youth. Nicholas Fagan has demonstrated unwavering commitment to our youth development and community enrichment through innovative and inclusive programming, and he has created impactful Just Come Outside Reading Event, reaching out to youth across various cities and neighborhoods, inspiring a love for reading and literacy. And whereas Mr. Fagans has organized a beloved and annual community event, including trunk or treat, Thanksgiving gift bags, offering families safe, engaging, and joyful experiences year after year. In ways, he has coordinated holiday gift drives to ensure local children and families experience the warmth of the season. He has provided direct support to young dancers through a generous donation to assist them with travel needs, expanding opportunities for creating expressions and achievement. He's co-founder of Peace in the Streets. He has, he's co-founder of Happy Saturdays. I mean, I could go on and on. The bottom line is, and then he's there to help and uplift the community when things, you know, are not going as well for things like when we had the shooting. Nicholas was one of the first ones there to help with the family and the victims. And these are things that, you know, we never know about, but as individuals like Nick, if they're not part of the community, this community will look and feel a lot different. And so, Nicholas, it's my honor to present this proclamation to you, and we'd like for you to come up, so you can get this.
I am surprised. But I'm just a kid in Charlottesville.
No, turn around the...
Okay.
See, he's all about community. He's all about community.
You see me? I got my club shirt on.
You're good.
So, I'll come this way. I'm just a club, a kid from Charlottesville, you know, seeing a lot of people incarcerated, my friends incarcerated. I've just seen a lot of things coming up. So, my goal is to keep the kids that's growing up from making the same decisions that some of my friends made and the decisions that I made. So, I'm in a better place now, and like I said, I just want to keep our kids striving towards the right thing.
We appreciate you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We got him. We got him good. She's been planning this since April, man. And so, it is now my honor to recognize an event that's starting next week, the Soul of Seaville Festival, where Soul of Seaville is a celebration that honors the rich cultural heritage, vibrant arts, and community spirit that makes Charlottesville unique. And whereas the Soul of Charlottesville is in the milestone of its fifth year, will bring together residents and visitors alike to enjoy a diverse array of performances, food, award recognition, economic development opportunities, and the Best in Black Seaville Award Ceremony. People have been really voting for that. So, looking forward to that. They do scholarships giveaway and activities that showcase the soul of our city. And whereas the Soul of Seaville is at its essence, a community-building experience that highlights the contribution of local artists, engaged community members, musicians, and entrepreneurs, it serves as a platform for fostering unity, promoting diversity, and supporting local businesses with the 2025 theme Firm Planted, Fiercely Flourishing. And whereas the Free Family, Free Family Friendly Soul of Seaville Festivals return to Ex-Part Art Park on Saturday, August 16th, uniting residents and visitors from all backgrounds and walks of life to enjoy live music and performances, fashion shows, Black artisans markets, and local vendors from local Black-owned restaurants, community access to the looking glass, immersive art experiences, and more. Therefore, the City of Charlottesville endorses the values and cultural appreciation, encouraging the community members to participate in the wide range of Soul of Seaville festivities signed this day, August 4th, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. On behalf of the entire Soul of Seaville team, thank you so much for the proclamation. It truly means the world to us. When we first launched this event, the goal was simple but powerful, to create space where Black excellence, culture, creativity, and joy could be seen, felt, and celebrated right here in Charlottesville. And now, to have that work recognized for our fifth anniversary by the city, that's love. This year's theme is Firmly Planted, Fiercely Flourishing, and that's exactly what this community has done. After events such as August 12th and the shooting that you mentioned just in July, there's a lot of things that go on, and we like to take our time to be intentional about using our Black joy as resistance. We've laid roots, we've weathered storms, and we continue to grow boldly in every direction with purpose and pride. Special thanks to Mayor Juan Diego Wade and City Manager Sam Sanders for not just showing support, but showing up. We're so excited to have you both presenting during next week's Best in Black Seaville Awards. And you're right, people are showing up. We had over 5,000 people participate in the nomination and voting process alone. Your presence sends a message that this community matters and that our stories, our brilliance, and our impact are worth celebrating. So, again, thank you for seeing us, honoring us, and standing with us. We're just getting started, and trust the Soul of Seaville is just getting stronger.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to it. So happy that we can always start off the meetings with these proclamations and positive things that are going on in our community. We're now...
I'm sorry. I actually have one more.
Yeah.
I know it's not till next month, but put it on your calendars now. Saturday, September 27th, is the Loop de Ville hike, bike, or run, which is a 20-ish mile loop, which I know sounds intimidating, but you have all day to do it, that you start at the Ravenna River Company area, and you walk all around. You circumnavigate the city on trails. So, you get a great experience with a bunch of people to like explore new outdoor space, all within our city limits. There's rest stops along the way, providing snacks and food and drinks. And then at the end, there's a big festival at Ravenna River Company with music and more beverages and food, and just really good times. So, mark your calendars for September 27th for the Loop de Ville.
Yeah, that's great. If we could put that, Sam, on our website, the... We're now at the point for community matters. We have opportunity for 15 people to speak. We have one person that have pre-registered, and the second one that I've promised to be number two. And then we have opportunity for 14 others to speak, but there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. So, the first speaker is Alicia.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Lenahan. I live in the county. I'm in the city on almost a daily basis. And before I say anything, I'd like to congratulate Nick Fagans for the recognition he so richly deserves. So, Nick adds a lot of joy to a lot of events.
Yes.
I am not here to fight for a political party. I'm here to fight for the democratic process, and the stakes could not be higher. We all have to take a stand, and that includes the City Council. Governor J.B. Pritzker described your role this way. "To be in public office right now is to constantly ask yourself, how do I make sure that we're standing on the right side of history?" There's a simple answer. The wrong side of history will always tell you to be afraid. The right side of history will always expect you to be courageous. Expect courage from people around you, and it will show up. Expect fear, and fear will rule the day. Federal and state judges continue to stand up. State legislators are standing up, including Delegate Michael Jones from Richmond. Senators Kane and Warner have introduced a bill barring ICE agents from wearing masks. Let the courage of these leaders be an example to this community and the rest of the country. We continue to be deeply concerned about the aggressive, cruel overreach demonstrated by the federal administration on a daily basis. Our immigrant and refugee neighbors are the most vulnerable. However, numerous reports and video evidence show that U.S. citizens and immigrants with lawful status have been detained, questioned, or targeted, exacerbating distrust and public safety risks. At your last meeting, we offered a resolution modeled after the one passed by Huntington Park, California, that condemns non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics and affirms our community safety principles. To date, over 600 people have signed the supporting petition. Use this resolution to state unequivocally that the City Council believes that non-cooperation must not be confused with inaction, and that the Charlottesville Police and city staff will proactively work within legal bounds to document, verify, and safeguard against federal overreach. Use this resolution to state unequivocally that the City of Charlottesville is committed to the rule of law, civil rights, and the safety and dignity of all its residents regardless of immigration status. We know you will not make this decision lightly, but you can make it with absolute moral clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, sir, would you like...
Me?
Yes. Take your time, yeah.
How y'all doing?
Great.
I come here in behalf of over that Orange Day Avenue. The incident that happened that night. I was just pulling in from picking up because I got a nonprofit organization that I run, food sharing is caring. And I'm delighted y'all to see on Facebook what we do and stuff like that. We go to, I met him, Mr. Sanders, at the, what was that place?
What, Stephen?
Huh?
Was it...
No.
Last week.
Right up here with, yeah, right up there in Crescent Hall and stuff. We go there, and then we got ours set up down at Thompson Park every Sunday morning at 10:00. And that night that the incident on July before, I just pulled up around about nine something, parked a van with the trailer and everything, unloading all that stuff, put stuff away. Went in there, went to bed because I had to get up there Saturday morning. And stuff. Next thing I know, I heard the cameras, heard it. I was knocked out. Girlfriend said, oh, shooting going on, shooting going on, police out there and all that. Oh, my God. I said, oh, what they done done there? So, me, I've been there. I had my cars there. I had a nice car and everything. Like, I got rid of it and stuff like that. Reason I got rid of my car because I feel inside of me that fireworks, shooting, and everything like that, where I be at, kids, teenagers, and all that stuff, you know, they out there doing their thing, laying on my car, got a BMW. They sitting on my car. One night, I came out there, told the guy, I said, look, either you gonna get off of it, or you gonna lay there for good. I don't play like that. I don't go in nobody property or nobody cars and sit on nobody else's stuff. My mom raised me to respect. Show respect, you get respect. But if you don't show me respect, and I'm showing you respect, and come the opposite way, then I'm gonna have to flip on the opposite side. I don't want to do that. I came a long way. I did a lot of time and everything like that. I turned my life around.
Yes, sir.
On a positive note. I do things for the positive, and I talk to young kids out there and tell them, do what you're doing. Get a job. Be somebody.
Yes.
That is exactly what my mom said, be somebody, before she closed her eyes. And before she closed her eyes, I made a good commitment, and that's what I'm doing, and I've been sticking to it from that day on.
Yes, sir.
And stuff. But it's gotta stop. That stuff over there gotta stop. Young kids out there got in crossfire. If my grandkids had went out there, believe me, Lord, as my witness, y'all wouldn't have to worry about the Charlottesville Police Department. The mayor and my family would have fined them, and then we would eliminate them.
Thank you, sir.
I don't play that way. But the thing is, though...
Yeah, your time is up.
Oh, my God. Ain't even finna get to the situation.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Tell us your name. Tell us your name.
You know my name. John Green. I talked to you before. Yeah, John Green.
I know. I just wanted to...
Yeah. I gotta go. I gotta pick up.
All right.
Because I need to do some changes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I gotta go.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm Louis Desabry, and I'm also here to talk about fireworks. You know, I went and saw the fireworks in Stanton this year, and I was on my way home, and, you know, my friend Adisa called and told me about the shooting and everything that was going on. They had the road blocked off. And so, I went around the other way. I came up seven and a half, and all of a sudden, hundreds of people standing in the middle of the street, shooting fireworks, wouldn't stop, you know? And this has been going on for years and years. And so, since then, we've been, you know, talking to people in the neighborhood, started a petition, you know. Fifeville does not want fireworks going off in our neighborhood. You know, it's just been out of control for so many years, and we really want to see it stop. So, we've got this letter here. "We, the undersigned residents of Charlottesville, formally petition our elected officials and law enforcement leadership to uphold and enforce the city's existing prohibition on fireworks as codified in City Code Chapter 12, Article 3, Section 12-32. This ordinance clearly prohibits possession, sale, discharge, or use of fireworks within city limits, recognizing the serious risks they pose to public safety, property, and community well-being. However, in recent years, on and around the Fourth of July, has been a significant increase in the use of illegal fireworks across several neighborhoods, including Orange Dale Avenue and adjacent areas. Despite the clear legal restrictions, enforcement has been inconsistent, leaving residents to contend with excessive noise, fire hazards, risk to personal safety and property in this densely populated and historically underserved area. We are deeply concerned that this lack of enforcement not only undermines community trust in public safety institutions, but also places an unfair burden on residents who must navigate the consequences of these illegal and dangerous activities on their own. Accordingly, we respectfully request the following: A public acknowledgement from city leadership affirming a commitment to enforcing City Code 12-32; A plan to allocate additional police patrols on and around the Fourth of July; Active ticketing of offenders and confiscation of illegal fireworks; Ongoing community outreach and communication in advance of the holiday period, reminding residents of the fireworks... residents of the fireworks ban and associated penalties. And a post-holiday report summarizing enforcement actions taken and outcomes observed. We believe that through proactive enforcement and community engagement, the City of Charlottesville can better protect its residents and uphold its own public safety ordinances. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter and your continued service to our community.
Thank you very much. Can we get a copy of that letter?
Yes, we have copies for everybody here.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak? Give it to the clerk there. Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Adisa Fiffich. I live in the Orange Dale 19 years. Every year, we have a fireworks. Fireworks is not legal in Charlottesville, but I have a concern about my neighbors and my neighborhood because we have damaged housing, damaged car. People was, you know, they have shooting, you know, all the time except last year. And I hoping they are can help us with that resolve this issue in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to, yes?
Mo Vanda Sample, 608 Cabell Avenue. I'm here speaking on a much less urgent topic than what previous speakers have been talking about. The slip lanes on Preston gotta go, folks. They gotta go. Slip lanes are the ones that if you are coming in straight but want to make a right turn, you get this little protected thing that makes it so that you can just go right. The slip lanes on Preston and the Ridge McIntyre intersection, I cannot tell you how many people I have almost seen hit by a car or when they are biking, crossing across those things. I saw recently that the city put up stop signs instead of the yield signs that had been there previously. I strongly encourage you to go take a look. The cars do not care. They are paying absolutely zero attention to it. At the end of the day, cars do not pay much attention to road rules, to speed limits, to stop signs. They pay attention to the structure of the road. If the structure of the road tells them they can go fast, they will. If the structure of the road says, oh, you just need to be looking to the left here to wait until a car is not coming so that you can come in, they will go the moment that happens and then only afterwards turn forward and see, oh no, a pedestrian has emerged in front of me. Genuinely, it has happened to me personally three separate times that I've had to jump back on the crosswalk. Now that I'm biking a lot more, there's this big problem where the bike lane ends. When you're going towards the downtown mall, you hit Fourth Street and then the bike lane just suddenly ends. And if you want to continue going straight, you need to cross diagonally across a lane of traffic with cars merging right into you so that you can avoid just like being forced outwards onto Ridge McIntyre and continue traveling in the direction of the mall. Slip lanes are a thing that makes like a small amount of sense on really major highways. It makes sense to have these on things like 29, for example. The pedestrian mall is probably one of the most heavily foot trafficked places in the state. The idea that we are having these extremely like car-centric infrastructure developments right next to it is just terminally car brand. Gotta get rid of them. There's just no way. The stop signs are not doing anything. So if you want to solve this problem, you could turn them into protected things, which would basically mean turning that lane into a bike lane. That would be a cute thing to do. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll be, I'll check that out. So thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? There'll be another opportunity at the end. So if I don't see anyone, I will close the Public Matters for this point and we'll now go to the Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda, number two, minutes, June 16th, regular meeting. Number three, resolution to appropriate additional funds for Emmett Street Corridor Streetscape Project, $1,436,519, second reading. Number four, resolution appropriating $60,000 for Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program, Summer Food Service Program, one of two readings.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Are we voting?
Did we do it?
Yep.
Good job, team.
Sneaking up on it.
Good evening, Council and members of the public. Two parts to tonight's City Manager's Report. Bill Moyer with Ravanna Authorities will be presenting an update on the Central Waterline Project. It's been a much talked about project that we are close to having ready to get started. So he's going to give you an update and then I'll give a few general updates for the public after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Sanders.
Ms. Sina.
Kinda.
Kinda, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we call the Central Waterline Construction Project that's going to be in the city. This is a picture at the top right there of work we have currently going on on Hurford Drive at Observatory Mountain. So it's just up the hill from Stadium Road and we're putting in a 36-inch pipe right there, similar to what we're going to be doing on the Central Waterline. Okay, so generally, just as a reminder, the Central Waterline is going to be about five miles of large piping, 24-inch and 30-inch drinking water piping installed throughout the city. And in addition, we have a little over half a mile of water piping, drinking water piping that we're going to install for the City Utility Department. And most of, these pipes are going to be installed primarily under the streets. We expect construction to start around October. The contractor has ordered pipe and that's the delivery date he's getting is October. The total project is going to cost around $79 million. The funding formula is 48% of that is shared by the City Utility Department and 52% by the Albemarle County Service Authority. We're going to have a community information meeting about this project on September 16th at the Carver Recreation Center and we'll send out notices and invitations for people to attend that.
Can you say that just one more time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're going to have a community information meeting on September 16th from 5:00 to 6:30 PM at the Carver Recreation Center and we'll tell the community about this project. They've heard about it a couple of years ago as we were planning it, but now that we're ready to go construction, we wanted to give them more details. So the purpose of the project is really to help us move drinking water more effectively through our drinking water system and to make it analogous to traffic. This is going to be like an interstate highway running through the city, major big pipes to get water through the city and out to the county, especially between our Observatory Mountain Water Treatment Plant and the Pantops Tank, which is on Pantops Mountain. It also helps us to utilize the full 10 million gallons per day production capacity that we recently spent about $25 million creating in the Observatory Mountain Water Treatment Plant. So right now, we have a pipe restriction below the plant and we're going to alleviate that with this larger piping. And this project goes back about 38 years to 1987. At the time, it was called the Southern Loop Agreement Project and it was envisioned that this pipe would be installed near Interstate 64, around the southern side of the city. But we did a study and in cooperation with your utility department and we determined that it was much more beneficial to have this pipe installed throughout the city, closer to the heart of where the demand is. And we brought the project to, to this council in 2022 and showed you five different routes and council approved what we call the Southern Route, which is primarily on Cherry Avenue. And that was also approved by our board and the Albemarle County Service Authority Board. So this is the, the route that we plan. So we, we're going to connect on Stadium Road near Observatory Mountain and come across Lewis Street and under the railroad track, Jefferson Park Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, and then we go towards the east on Cherry Avenue. The red line is what we're calling the first phase. The blue line, we're going to do a little bit later and I'll tell you why in just a second. But the blue dots that you see, five blue dots on the red line, those are locations where we're going to interconnect with the city's current drinking water system to help your distribution system. So the first phase is four miles of drinking water piping. In addition, we have several hundred feet of drinking water piping we're going to install for your City Utility Department. And we have awarded a construction contract to Segres Construction out of Alexandria. The total budget's about $58 million to put in those four miles of 24 and 30-inch piping. And again, they expect to start work around October and be finished in about four years. The second phase is the purple line that you can see there. Originally, we were going to do this project as one phase, but when we worked with City Utilities and looked underground on East High Street, we found that there were so many pipes and utilities in the ground there that we could not fit our large pipe in East High Street. So that's why we segregated that one mile section of this project into what we're calling Phase Two and we're still designing that. But that will follow the purple line down Little High Street and Fairway Avenue and then presumably come across city-owned property near the Ravanna River. That's the purple line. And then it goes back to East High Street and connects near the Long Street Bridge. The blue line in East High Street, again, is a city water line that we're going to construct on behalf of the city. And the green line is a, is a short run of water that we're going to construct for the Albemarle County Service Authority and kind of get all the water line work done right there in one project. We envisioned that that project's going to cost about $21 million. And again, the City Utility Department has allocated 48% of that cost with the Albemarle County Service Authority, 52%. And if all grows as planned, we would really do, we'd be working on both of these phases concurrently, starting around May of next year. The city will be asked to provide easements for the purple line on your, your parcels near the river as well, the green line with the Albemarle County Service Authority. So the big picture is this whole project and several projects are to increase the water supply for our community. And this traces back to 2002 with the last historic drought. And our community was very concerned it was going to run out of water. There was anecdotal comments of having to close the university and send the students home because there wasn't enough water. And so the community in 2012 crafted a plan to build a new dam at the Ragged Mountain Reservoir. And in order to fill the Ragged Mountain Reservoir, we have to pipe water to it. Currently, we pipe it from Sugar Hollow Reservoir, but this plan, we'll build the purple line from the South Ravanna Reservoir and we will pump water to Ragged Mountain and keep it full. The brown line is a new pipeline that we would be able to convey untreated water from the Ragged Mountain Reservoir to the Observatory Treatment Plant. That's under construction right now. That red section of pipe is right beside Birdwood Golf Course. That's already been installed. That was put in six years ago when the foundation, UBA Foundation, was remodeling the golf course. We found out to be a strategic time not to, to put in our pipes so we didn't have to come back later and damage any of their work. The Central Waterline is the blue line threading its way through the city. So that is under construction and we plan to bid the purple line from South Ravanna to Ragged around September and hopefully get that awarded this fall. And we will have 15 to 20 miles of major water piping under construction in the community with the whole intent that we can, we're going to add 700 million gallons to the Ragged Mountain Reservoir and increase our community's water supply to about 3.3 billion gallons. That sounds like a huge amount, but we use over 10 million gallons a day. So when you divide by 10 million, the number of days are not that plentiful, but we feel like this will put us in a good position to have an adequate water supply for many years for our community. And that totals about $275 million with an allocation to the Service Authority and the City Utility Department. And again, we're going to have the community information meeting on September 16th from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Carver Recreation Center. I have some pictures of an ongoing project if you're interested. If not, that's, I thought I did. That's the end of my presentation. I'm sorry.
Well, that gets looked for. Can you go over those numbers you said right at the end, 700 million will be added?
To Ragged Mountain Reservoir.
And will that be 700 million just from the South Ravanna or total from both Sugar Hollow and South Ravanna?
We're going to discontinue use of the Sugar Hollow pipe. That's about 100 years old and so that's going to be put out of service. Now, the Sugar Hollow flows through the Mormons River to the South Ravanna Reservoir. So in effect, we're still getting water from Sugar Hollow, but we're going to pipe it from the Ravanna Reservoir to Ragged Mountain. And what this is going to allow us to do is to use both our Observatory Treatment Plant and our South Ravanna Water Treatment Plant. We can provide water from either the South Ravanna Reservoir or the Observatory or the Ragged Mountain Reservoir to either of those water treatment plants. So you may know that the Charlottesville Airport is not far from the Ravanna Reservoir by, as a crow flies. And none of the scenarios we train with is what, what would happen if a plane crashed into the South Ravanna Reservoir? If it hit the dam? If it hit the water treatment plant? And that would be catastrophic as we stand right now and it will be in the future should it ever happen also. But when we interconnect the Ravanna Reservoir with the Ragged Mountain Reservoir and thereby the Ravanna Water Treatment Plant with the Observatory Treatment Plant, we would still be able to provide water to the community even if we had a problem at either of the two locations. So it's a tremendous flexibility that it will give us.
Thank you. And then you said it was 303, how many billion something?
Million, oh, gallons?
Yeah.
We would have in total 3.3 billion gallons. We'll have 2.1 billion gallons at Ragged Mountain. We'll have over, about 900 million gallons in the Ravanna Reservoir and about 350 million gallons in the Sugar Hollow Reservoir. And they'll be connect, they'll be interconnected.
Great. And thank you. I just want to make sure I had those numbers right in my notes. And then the Phase Two construction that would go down Little High and Mead, how is that, how is that done? Like, how long will the roads be disturbed as it, like, is it this block and then we cover it up and then this block and then we cover it up? So?
Yes, ma'am. Generally, we, we've limited our contractor to 100 feet that he can trench and open and then he's got to install that pipe and, and, and fill, backfill on top of the pipe and get it in a condition that it can be used. Now, all the paving might not happen exactly by the 100 feet, but yes, we're not going to let him disturb a mile of piping and inconvenience to everyone that way. So the, it'll be a rolling worksite that will move down the street and they'll be generally substantially complete behind them as they move on. And they're going to start at the Lewis Road, Observatory Mountain Inn, and then work towards Long Street.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Over about four years. Thank you.
Michael, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm fully aware, you know, there's the larger context of the community water supply plan and that has a long history of its own. I do think, to my memory, this is the most significant infrastructure project this, at my time on council, the city's done, just in terms of the geographic extent, the scale of disturbance, the time period of that disturbance. So I think it is legitimate for the public to question it and want answer to certain things.
Sure.
Could you walk through a little bit more, just in terms of what it practically on the ground looks like for when this project gets to a specific road? How deep you're digging, the type of work that will be going on, as well as, I know you're going, you know, how long is each 100 feet going to take? As well as, I know you're going, you know, how long is each hundred feet gonna take? How long should someone expect a road closure in a certain area?
We're gonna hope a hundred feet will take more or less five working days. Right now, in a similar project on Hereford Drive, they've been making about twenty feet a day of progress, and they've had some rock. And that's a, that's a common issue in that community that when we, the trench is gonna be about ten feet deep. And so they're gonna have a surveyor to lay it out on the street and put lines on the street to know exactly where we want our pipe to go. And we identify all the existing utilities that are already there to make sure we don't conflict with them. And then they'll saw cut the asphalt on the lines that the surveyor laid out, and they'll start excavating probably about a three- or four-foot trench. If there's rock, they have drilling machines. I'm sorry, I can't show you the photos. Actually, I sent them to all of you today on an email. But it showed the drilling machine that the contractor used on Hereford Drive. So he did what they call honeycombing. He drills a number of holes to break up the rock, and then they come back with a, what they call a hoe ram, and they bang, like a jackhammer, and they bang on the rock, and that's how they remove the rock from the trench, if there is any rock. Because you may know, there's no blasting allowed in the city without council's approval. So we've told our contractor, no blasting. In addition, there are gas lines and other lines in the streets that we wouldn't wanna blast around anyway. So, so they will excavate the top portion of the trench and go all the way down ten feet. If there's rock, then they'll work to excavate the rock. They put in metal trench boxes for safety purposes, and then they pick up the big, it'll be thirty-six, a three-foot diameter pipe, twenty feet long. They extend it into the trench box, they get their men in the trench box, and they make the connections. And then they just move along and drag the trench box with them. As they get one section finished, they drag forward to the next. And where we have existing utilities, some residences, sewer laddies have been, had been a discussion point. They have to protect those sewer laddies, laterals, to make sure lateral pipes, that they don't damage them. If they did that, do damage them, they have to repair them. So we're trying to be protective of your citizens and their sewer lines or water lines, anything that might be along the same path under the street.
So then, so why, it sounds like this is a place, but to be clear, you know, there's no plan to come to city council requesting blasting as part of this project?
That's correct. No plan to. I mean, we've told our contractor, he's not allowed to blast.
But, you know, just as a fact of the project, you know, it sounds like depending on the specific site conditions, the specific road, you know, people should expect there could be roads that are closed for a pretty significant amount of time, depending on, again, site conditions.
One lane likely of a street, we're gonna keep the streets open at all times, and we're gonna get any residents access to their home or the mailman or any kind of emergency vehicle. We will always provide access to all the residences or businesses in the area. But it will be a moving, one-lane stoppage as they're doing that work, but they'll have probably flagmen on both sides and letting traffic through. If it's four lanes, maybe like JPA, we may divert traffic to the other side. So we work with the city traffic engineer to set up those traffic management plans. And so when they get the pipe done, then they fill it up on top with the stone, and they measure the compaction to make sure it's properly compacted. And then the last, they test the pipe, we fill it with water and test to make sure it's not leaking. And when they've confirmed that, then, then we would pave the, repave the asphalt.
Right. And I hear that, that totally makes sense, you know, in my mind, it's no, not trying to cast any negative light or intention, but in my mind, you know, there have been times in the past where the city has put out a similar intent, and there are situations where for a specific business or a specific residence, the specific way it impacted their business or their ability to access their property did have an unintended consequence. What is the plan for, if any, if there's a local business, and there are local businesses along this route, who, for whatever site conditions, their business functionally, in terms of the mainway people's vehicular traffic gets to it, you know, reduces their business by forty, fifty percent, something like that? And we've had that situation happen in the past with some projects.
I see. Well, we will coordinate with every business that we get to and try to strategize a time when maybe they either have less business, or they're closed, or in the evening, that we can do our work and not impact them any more than necessary. And otherwise, when we, if they don't have any unforeseen problems getting the pipe in, we'll have a good estimation of how long we're gonna be at that site and try to accommodate their access and other business needs as best, as best we can.
And I know you have the community meeting coming up. I know that, you know, your board meetings are public and people can watch them, they are public record. As a fact, significant parts of this route, you know, are low-income, working-class communities. There are also local businesses along the route. It's at least a four-year project. It's very extensive. What is the plan for reaching some of those communities to let them know? Because I have a strong sense, a lot of people and businesses on that route may not be aware of how extensive this project is in terms of being for potentially more years and just the scale of the disruption. I mean, even just from a construction noise perspective.
Yes, sir.
It will impact people's, you know, lives.
Yes, sir. There's no question, and we'll do our best to minimize it, but there'll be some impact. Now, we're going to not only have our community meeting, we'll have the one meeting, but we may have multiple meetings as we get closer and closer to certain neighborhoods. When we were planning the project back in 2022, we had virtual meetings with all the neighborhoods, the Sprout Fry Springs and, and on Cherry Avenue and Little High, we had meetings with them online. And we will have letters and virtual meetings, or we can have in-person meetings with them as we get to their neighborhood. And we can say more specifically, we will be at your neighborhood in about two weeks, and we're gonna be there for four weeks. So they have specific information, because it is a four-year project. So we don't wanna say, everyone, we're gonna be in your neighborhood on day one. No, that's not gonna be the case. And so we're hopeful that the contractor's gonna make rapid progress. The weather cooperates, the rock is minimal, but we'll have to take it day by day. But we're gonna do our best. We hired a communication coordinator in the past year, and on his primary job is making sure that we're communicating with the neighborhoods along the route of this project.
Just a few other questions, you know, as it relates to part of it, you know, is gonna go through a city-owned parcel that, the exact future of it is not yet determined. Significant portions are functionally used as a de facto park at this point. What is the impact gonna be there in terms of the city granting an easement? What is the scale of the number of feet that would have to be clear-cut? Can there be planting after that? Because this is gonna be a disturbance when I look at it, areas that are de facto used as a public park in the city.
Well, we allow certain smaller trees and vegetation to be, to grow in our easement. We do try to keep our easements generally clear in case we would have a water break so we can get in and fix it. But, you know, short of oak trees and things like that, we wouldn't want those to be planted on top of the pipe in the easement, should it be granted. And we would coordinate with your utility department and Parks Department to try to accommodate how they wanted to use the facility and the property while we're there. The underground part will be transparent. No one will know the pipe is there. And it is an issue of the vegetation, not, you couldn't build a structure on top of our pipe in the easement, and you couldn't plant large trees in the easement. But otherwise, it would be, you could use it as you preferred.
Yeah, I mean, I know we've discussed it a little bit, but, you know, I definitely would be curious to learn more about the details of that. I mean, to have, you know, a pretty significant impact in terms of the construction and the easement on, you know, property that the city sent, you know, not insignificant amount of money on and that the future is not determined for yet, I don't know, to me seems worthy of perhaps a little bit more information, at least I'm curious.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes. I know Ms. Hildebrand is planning some information, I think, for the council, and I'll be glad to work with her on that.
And the final question is just, and obviously, I'm not on the Art Upstate Board, so, you know, I'm not, have not been involved in all the intimate details of the project's development. But from, you know, the updates I've seen, the complexity of this project has changed significantly. I mean, in terms of like the scale of the kind of digging that you're gonna need to do, some of the things that have come up. How confident are you that these timelines and cost figures are actually gonna be accurate? Because, I mean, those are, if my memory is like correct, like fairly in line with where this project was before all this additional complexity?
We're pretty confident in the cost now because the Phase One, we've already bid, and that's eighty percent of the whole project. So we're pretty comfortable with the seventy-nine million. We will hope that by the end of the project, we'll be under that. But as far as the timeline, you know, we, we check references on our contractors. In fact, the low bidder on that project, we did not award the contract to him because he did not fully meet the experience requirements that we had in our contract, and so we did not award to the low bidder with that very concern that we want qualified, experienced contractors. And this particular contractor, Sagris Construction from Alexandria, has done a lot of work around Washington and Baltimore, and they are a very experienced contractor. So we have a positive high hope that they're gonna do well for us.
And, you know, finally, even if things stick to the cost, I mean, this is about three-hundred-million dollars of capital projects coming up, what should people expect in terms of the scale of rate increases that will be coming along from that?
Well, your utility department works with council to translate our charges into their retail rates. Clearly, we're a large component of the city utilities budget, as we are with the Alamo County Service Authority budget. So it wouldn't be hard to say that it will, it could generate some rate increases. The magnitude, your utility department would have to comment on that.
Yeah. And I know these capital projects aren't the only driver, but if my memory is correct, over, you know, several-year period, you know, it's reached a point where, you know, people's bills could increase by a couple hundred dollars annually. So it is not insignificant in terms of having a real impact on, you know, people's budgets. I'll, I'll end there, and I'll just also end by saying, I fully understand there is a larger conversation about the community water supply plan with its own history. But I do think the scale, in my time on council, this is the biggest infrastructure project in terms of geographic scope, when you combine with the scale of the kind of disturbance that there's gonna be. I know in the past, I mean, the city has made mistakes in terms of our projects negatively impacting a specific homeowner or business in a way that we didn't anticipate. And with just this being a four-plus-year project and the geographic scope, I would be shocked if things like that don't come up. So I'm just very concerned about what plan we have in place ahead of time to deal with those kind of things. Because again, when I just see the scale and scope, I would be shocked if unanticipated consequences do not come up.
We're working underground, and we don't know what we're gonna find until we open that trench. But we're hoping it's work as normal, and we have an expert crew and a contractor that we're gonna focus on and do our best to mitigate any, any issues that come up. So it is a large construction program, no question about that. Fifteen to twenty miles of piping through the community is huge of this large piping. So, but the bottom line is, when we're finished, we're gonna have a secure community as far as our water supply for not only our existing residents, but future residents and businesses coming to the area. And frequently, one of the first questions they ask is, do you have the water to, to serve our business? So we wanna make sure we have that.
I'll end there for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my question is, so from what you said, it says it's gonna take about four years?
Yes, sir.
To do this, about a four-mile project? So is that normal, about a mile a year? Or is it more or less because of the terrain and, you know?
Well, we're trying to be conservative and, you know, not, not say it's gonna be two years and take four. So we try to give the contractor adequate time. We're gonna monitor his progress as he gets going and hopefully see him make more progress than twenty feet a day. And, and hopefully, he'll finish. That is not a, that's a maximum amount of time, not, not a minimum. If he, if he works hard and has good fortune, he can finish in however many years he takes, less than four. So that will be our hope. But, but that's what the contract allows him, is four years. It is a lot of work. It's a big pipe. And even as we say now, it's taken almost six months when they order the pipe to get the pipe. So it's not readily available equipment.
And they have the pipe for the whole project? It's not like they'll get halfway through and it's a delay?
I don't know that for sure. I'm not sure they're gonna buy four miles of pipe at one time. They've hopefully contracted for it, because they, it's a fixed-price bid, so they've obligated themselves to the price. So if I were them, I would obligate the full purchase. Now, whether they'll have it
On-site or whatever.
Intermittently shipped to us? Probably not, unless they find a pretty big yard to store that much pipe.
Yeah. And my last kind of comment is that the person, your outreach person that you hired within last year, I recommend that he work closely with Afton and our staff, who have regular contacts with neighborhood associations and people in the community, that he, they won't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yes, sir.
And if it may be coming from some, a source that they know.
Yes, sir. Good idea.
We'll do what we can up here as well.
Thank you so much, and I'll be glad to come back in a few months and give you another update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Additional items that I have, just for general public consumption. Let's see, I wanna thank both Police and Fire for hosting me on ride-alongs this summer. I had a very interesting time with some of our professional public safety team members, learned a lot, appreciate what they do for the community, and definitely got a taste of the tension of their jobs, so I'm glad they do the work, not me. So definitely wanna thank them for how they serve the community. We also celebrated adding the bus stop at Midway Manor last week, and it was a big moment. Just wanna acknowledge Ms. Mary Carey for her steadfast advocacy and persistent reminders that we owed her that bus stop for the residents at Midway Manor, and we finally delivered. So I'll give a high five to my team for handling the pokes and prods and how I did everything I could to make sure that happened as soon as possible. And also just acknowledging a few events that have happened. KF had their graduation last week. It was a great opportunity at PBCC to celebrate those young people for their summer work experience. West Haven Community Day on Saturday was well-attended. Definitely saw a lot of city staff and a number of you out there as well, Mayor, in the dump tank.
Yeah.
Thank you for taking that hit for us. And the Ting Back-to-School Pavilion, Ting Pavilion Back-to-School Bash last, on Saturday also was well-attended. Just have reminders for the public as well that the other Back-to-School Bash at the Boys and Girls Club will be on Sunday from eleven to three, and the Tonsiller Championship Game and Block Party will be held on Sunday from five to nine. So those are two big events this weekend. And lastly, as a reminder, as kids return to school next week, the speed cameras that we installed at the end of the school year will be on. We will be ticketing. You will be paying if you speed. Do not get caught. Slow down. So on behalf of the children and our crossing guards, please slow down as our kids return to school. That's my report.
Thank you. Before we move on to the action items, the, the crew that came here from Prospect to talk about that, we really appreciate your comments, and we're gonna review the letter and talk with staff, and we'll get back in touch with you. So I just, I meant to tell that, mention that after you spoke. So thank you all again for coming out. We're now at the item, on the agenda for action items, and the first item is a public hearing and resolution appropriating funds for federal transit operation and capital grants, six-point, it's a lot of six there, six-point-six-six, six-million-six-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine dollars. So it's the second reading of Mr. Williams.
Not a penny more.
Not a penny more, yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm asking that I have a resolution in front of you, and then we'll have a public hearing. The resolution is to appropriate the six-million-six-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine dollars. That breaks down to three-million-one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars for capital. That purchased six diesel buses. They are all operational now and en route. We also are accepting, want to accept and appropriate operating dollars in the amount That breaks down, there's a breakdown of that, those, of that appropriation, seventy-five percent of that dollars comes to CAT, twenty-five percent goes to JONT. That breaks down to two-million-six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty That breaks down to two million, six hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to CAT and eight hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars to JONT. And that's for operators, operational expenses. Asking that you appropriate the, accept and appropriate those funds.
Great. So, before I open up the public hearing, I'll see if there are any questions or comments from council.
So, just to clarify, this is pass-through money from the FTA?
This is pass-through money.
And?
For JONT, it's pass-through.
Got it. And do, for the pass-through money, do they, do they tell us it goes here? Or do they give us money and we decide where it goes?
So, on the capital, we have to submit an application and tell them specifically what we're going to use the purposes for. On the operating side, it's already, we spell out the categories by which we will use it. So, on the operating side, it's mostly reimbursements for salaries that we're using the, the operating dollars for. On the JONT side of the money, because JONT does our ADA paratransit service, that is basically what the eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars is used for. So, it's used to offset the total expenses.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, would you?
Yeah, I guess similarly, I mean, essentially, not that it doesn't make it important, but this is money to fund what CAT's already doing, not do new things.
That's correct.
Lloyd?
No questions.
So, thank you. O'Neal opened up the public hearing. Did anyone from the public want to speak on this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing and consider a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution appropriating six million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars in transit grant funding for FY twenty-five.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please. I need to keep mine so.
I think if you press E mode at the top, it'll pop up. And then save.
Did I get it?
It tells me I'm recorded.
Oh, is it on here?
There we go.
Okay. We're already, great. We'll, we'll get it.
We're doing it.
Yes. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution for, thank you, Mr. Williams. The next item is a resolution for an extension of the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, Seventh Grant Amendment with the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority to December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, allowing for eligible and applicable use of carry-forward FY twenty-five C-SREP undrawn funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Yes, just that brief resolution. And good evening. Thank you, councilors, mayor, and city manager. I'm Madeline Metzler, the Housing Compliance Coordinator for Neighborhood Development Services. And tonight, I am presenting, as Mayor Wade has discussed, the resolution to extend the current grant amendment for the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, known as C-SREP. I'll start by explaining what C-SREP is and providing an update on its performance for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And then I'll discuss our recommendations for future, the future of the program and the actions we are seeking from you this evening. C-SREP was launched in twenty eighteen to supplement the federal voucher program, recognizing that the need in our community for rental assistance far exceeds the federal funding for those vouchers. And the program is a joint partnership between the city and the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, CRHA, which administers the program. The city allocates funding each year for C-SREP through its annual budget and upon the approval, we can extend the agreement for an additional year. In FY twenty-five, C-SREP supported seventy-one households. This was an increase in reach from the previous year. This time last year, the program was serving sixty-two households. And those seventy-one households include eighty-nine adults and ninety-four children. Participants must first look for housing within the city. If they're unable to do that or find suitable housing within a reasonable timeframe, they can then use the assistance in the county where forty-three percent of participants currently reside. The program is limited to households that earn sixty percent or less of the area median income. But currently, all of the program participants are at thirty percent or less of AMI. And on average, in the past year, participants' monthly rent was one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the assistance was providing on average nine hundred and seventy-four dollars per month, which covers about seventy percent of the monthly run. Now, typically, along with this update on the program, staff prepares a subsequent grant amendment to continue the program for an additional year. But this year, we are proposing a slightly different timeline to include plans for program improvements. We propose extending the current Seventh Grant Amendment to December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. This will allow us time to draft the next Eighth Grant Amendment with proposed preliminary changes to the program. These may include adjustments to participant eligibility and tenure, the funding request process, and the allocation for administrative costs. Importantly, we also have the necessary funds to maintain program operations during this period with no additional allocation or appropriation required. And in addition to drafting these revisions, the city staff will also collaborate with CRHA to develop a work plan for a comprehensive program evaluation. This will, in that time, we'll also plan to explore funding opportunities for software implementation and licensing costs. CRHA is already using a software platform for many of its other programs. And if it was used for C-SREP as well, this would enhance and streamline program administration. And as I mentioned, this extension will ensure that the program can continue operating without interruption while we complete the work I've just described and hopefully ensuring continued funding and program operations into the future. Now, the agenda packet in front of you does not contain the resolution. It has been, there is the agreement extension itself and a resolution that corresponds to that has been drafted and approved by the city attorney, but it didn't make it into the packet. So, tonight, we are requesting both the authorization to create a resolution and approval of said resolution for the extension of the Seventh C-SREP Grant Amendment. And I'm here to answer any questions, along with CRHA Executive Director John Sales, if you need any further information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lloyd, do you have any questions on this?
I have no questions.
No, I mean, to me, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Especially given, you know, from my recollection, it's been, you know, a routine every, every year that money from C-SREP has been reallocated to other purposes, which is fine. You know, it's still been put to good use, but I don't know if that's what sparked it, but to me, it's part of why it may make sense to do this. So, clarify, what are we voting on then if there's not a resolu, we're voting to authorize?
The creation of the resolution and approval of the resolution. That does exist, but it's not here in front of you. My apologies.
So, you, you have it, it just didn't make it to packets in middle time?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. So, if the, do you have any questions, Natalie, or?
We've, we've discussed it and the resolution will basically mirror the agreement that's already in the packet.
It just formalized what we've formalized.
The formatting is just in the format of a resolution.
Got it. And the money's already been allocated. We're just shifting where it's going, within the program.
Um, we're not really even shifting where it's going. There's still funding available there. Councilor Payne, to your point, there usually is some funding left at the end of the program year that has once or twice been used for other purposes, but is usually just carried forward into the next year. It's a program where we don't, you know, want the balance to go to zero. So, there is usually a carry-forward balance. And this will still not risk putting the reserves, they'll still be there as well, but there is enough funding based on our calculations to get us through to December.
Great.
Well, I'd be happy to move approval of the resolution to create a resolution as presented by staff tonight.
Yeah.
Is, is this not the resolution? Or is, that's the?
That was the resolution for the Seventh Grant Amendment.
Oh, I see the date.
Yeah, that was kind of part of the confusion that happened here.
So, move proper.
I'll second it.
Second. So, any further discussion? If not, can we vote? Thank you, Ms. Metzler.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. That, now we're at the part for, the second part for community matters. Would anyone like to speak? If not, with no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay. Do we vote electronically on that? Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Stand up.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.